Hart County, Georgia. Lord, we just pray that you'd be with our law enforcement, our EMS services, our fire department. We just pray, Lord, for your protection upon these guys. And we just pray, Lord, for our leaders of our state and our leaders of our country. And we just pray, Lord, that we could have unity back here in the United States of America. And we just pray, Lord, that you'd go with us through this meeting and help us make the best decisions for the people of Hart County in that name we pray. Amen.
This time I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, open the United States of America, and to the Republic before its two seconds. One, two, three, and go. End of the word. Quickly, but again, as far along.
This time I'll call to order the Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020, meeting of the Hart County Board of Commissioners. First item of business tonight will be to approve the agenda, and we do have some changes.
Yeah.
Item 13E, we're going to move.
13E?
Yes.
Litigation. All right.
Any other changes?
Uh, Ward wants to add a litigation to the executive session.
Okay. Any other changes tonight?
Not to get a motion to approve the agenda.
Chair, 13E was...
Yes, 13E, we're deleting.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Add litigation on the executive session. Have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, is it second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approved minutes of the previous meetings. You've got the August 25th meeting minutes in your packet. If there's no changes, can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes, September 8th.
Have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, is it second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried 3-0. Commissioner Carter abstained. Item 7, remarks by invited guests, committees, and authorities. We don't have anyone. Item 8, reports by constable officers and department heads. Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have a legal report, but I have a couple of observations that I'd like to make. And this is primarily, uh, there have been some, uh, comments which I've been aware of, both written and spoken, about the concern that some people have about people being called to or called out of order at this meeting. And what I want to observe is that in the length of time that I've been county attorney, I don't know of any government which has been more open in its meeting practices or more open in its disclosure of public records. Public records have never been sought to be hidden. Now, there are some times when records have information that you cannot release and that the law says you can't. And of course, we do not violate the law by releasing those types of records. But there have been hundreds, if not, probably not thousands that I've seen, but certainly hundreds of Open Records Act requests that have been promptly responded to and that the records have been disclosed. But the concern that I have tonight is really the thought that the, that ruling someone out of order is something that could happen over and over again and that it could impair a person's right of free speech. And in my observation of this government, it simply doesn't happen. In the last 30 years, I don't remember but three, maybe four times when someone was called out of order. And that's in the last 30 years. Prior to that, I don't know. But I've just not seen it as a practical matter. And I realize that someone could believe that it could be used as a weapon. Yes, it could. But as long as it's used with common sense, which it has been with this board, then there's really nothing to be concerned about. Again, it's, the number of times I've seen that happen have been few, very few and far between. And as you know, this government doesn't require, as many governments do, some kind of preface to getting time on the meeting. You know, there are a couple of governments that require you to alert them as early as Thursday of the week beforehand, before the meeting, and tell them that you want to be on the agenda and disclose your topic to them. And then you may or may not be allowed to speak at that meeting. Completely unlike the county board of commissioners does, which is ask for public comment on every single vote and/or virtually every single vote, and to provide for a period of public comment after the meeting. Y'all don't require permission. You don't require advance notice. You don't know what somebody's going to say. And sometimes, particularly in the climate that we have right now, a lot of people are hurting. A lot of people are hurting with this pandemic and with uncertainty and so forth. And sometimes people go overboard and they don't, you need to have the ability to call people out of order when they do not confine themselves to the business of the county because that's what you're here for, is to discuss the business of the county with your constituents. And that is a personal observation. Take it as you want.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. One question I do have while you're here. Has everybody signed the ethics pledge yet?
I haven't signed it.
So Commissioner Carter still hasn't signed it?
Ricky said he hasn't signed it.
So we have executive session tonight, so I just want to go ahead and address that. Okay, moving on, county administrator's report. Chair?
Just one thing. We got the news this afternoon that probate judge Mary Kirk's father passed away this afternoon. Just want to say our thoughts and prayers were heard, family, and anything we can do for him, hopefully that is done. That's all I have.
Okay. Chairman's report, I don't have anything. Commissioners' reports, District 7?
I'd just like to say I appreciate our law enforcement, EMS, Fire Department, and our county employees. Appreciate the job that they do and be seeing our road department out working on some roads throughout the county and appreciate what they do.
Okay. District 3?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
District 4?
I have nothing.
Okay. Moving on into old business, first item on the agenda will be public hearing for fiscal year 2021 general fund budget. Can I get a motion that we open up the floor for a public hearing for the FY '21 general fund budget? Have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, is it second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. While Terrell's pulling that up, if anybody would like to address the board on the agenda, I mean, on the budget, if you'll come to the podium. Anybody for a public hearing on the budget? Okay. You got anything you want to add to it? 13 million?
It's 13 million, 231,712 dollars. That's a revenue neutral budget. Revenue is matched the same. There's no tax increase. No, no tax. We did the rollback.
Just so everybody knows.
I make a motion to close the hearing?
Have a motion by Commissioner Sayer to close the public hearings, is it second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Teasley. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 12B, final adoption of the FY '21 budget. Since we've had our public hearing, can I get a motion that we adopt the FY '21 budget? Have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, is it second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. One time we was up here talking about when we first started the budget process, can y'all hear me? You hear me now? It sounded like an ATT commercial bill. But we had mentioned doing something about the grass cutting, and it's never come back up again to my lolly, so I didn't...
Something about the grass cutting?
Yeah, I didn't know.
Right now, what we're doing is since, well, when the waiting period for the detainees to come back out, I'm paying, we've, I've sent out price of requests from all the lawn care businesses in town. I had two that was the same price. Right now, we're doing one cutting by one of them, the next cutting by the other one, just on a weekly basis until we find out about our prisoners.
Okay. All I need, no, thank you.
Okay. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley and a second by Commissioner Sayer. Any more discussion? Public comment on the budget, even though we haven't public hearing, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. That budget will go into effect October 1st. Item 12C, tax year 2020 county millage rate certification. Chair?
We have to do this every year, and we had to wait on the school system to pass their millage rate, which they did last week, I believe it was. And this is the final tax resolution. This is what we collect taxes off of, this resolution here. You'll see that the overall millage rate for the county is 8.276. School system held there, they didn't take the rollback this year, they're at 13.156, which totals 21.432. We deduct, deduct the rollback from the sales tax, special purpose sales tax, local option sales tax, which is 2.568 meals. So that brings the county down to 7.5.711 meals per operation. And the combined net millage rate is 18.866, school and county in him and. It's a half a meal for emergency services, emergency medical services. And this is the resolution they passed, just forward it on to the state, along with another stack of documents for the collection of taxes. Any questions I can answer?
They've completed all the public hearings that they had to have. Everything's in order. Can I get a motion that we move forward with this millage rate certification for 2020?
I make a motion we move forward the millage rate certification for 2020.
Have a motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment on the millage rate? Not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 12D. This was removed from the agenda on the September 8th meeting. This is a vote to discuss releasing the July 14th, 2020 executive session minutes regarding real estate.
You had asked that I prepare these minutes for your review and approval. Commissioner, you pass those out. And I'll handle it any way you prefer, Mr. Chairman. You want me to read it?
You can.
This is executive session minutes, July the 14th, 2020. Members present included Chairman Joey Dorsey, Commissioner Strank, Teasley, Marshall Sayer, Carter. Also present was the county attorney, Walter Gordon, county administrator, Terrell Partain. Real estate discussion focused on a letter received from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers concerning the possible permanent closure of certain COE-operated public recreation areas on Lake Hartwell, and whether or not the county would be interested in taking over operation of one or more of these areas. Terrell Partain was instructed to contact the Corps of Engineers and get more information on the issue. It was noted that the Corps of Engineers had not made any final decision regarding park closures. And basically, it was, as you remember, it was a letter of information. Chairman Dorsey was concerned that reports by Commissioner Carter was concerned by reports Commissioner Carter had discussed this issue publicly. Commissioner Carter responded, "I guess I let it slip." He stated that the letter from the COE was a public record. The county attorney agreed that the letter itself was a public record that would be disclosed in an Open Records Act request. However, the details of the executive session discussion were not public since the board was merely considering its response to the letter and that any public discussion was premature. The board unanimously adopted a motion to return the open meeting and sign the affidavit as provided by law. No official action was taken.
Can I get a motion that we vote and release these as we had discussed previously?
I make a motion we release these minutes.
Approval?
Approved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, is it second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion?
I don't remember us telling Terrell to call or talk to the Corps. I don't remember that part of it. I don't remember it that way.
This is exactly what we asked, huh?
Well, maybe we did. I don't remember that.
You remember saying you let it slip?
Yep.
But you said publicly, you didn't say that. You said you did it on purpose.
Yep.
So you lied to us.
I was being sarcastic when I was being...
But you lied to us.
I didn't lie to you. I was just being sarcastic.
Well, you said one thing, and then you say something else, and they're 180 degrees apart.
I never lied about any of it. We're going, just a minute, you're going to say and try to beat me up.
No, I'm just sitting here...
I guess we do every meeting.
No, I'm just sitting here...
You just try to beat me down every meeting.
There's a contradiction.
Well, there's a contradiction. I was being sarcastic when I said that. And I squared it up way at the next meeting. I told you the truth. I don't remember anybody being told to do that, but I still stick by my story. I don't think it meets the requirements of being a behind closed door issue.
The issue here is trust. And when you say one thing to your colleagues, and then you get out here and you publicly make a statement, and I think you stated along, I'm paraphrasing, "Yeah, I did it on purpose, and I'll do it again." You stated that emphatically in a meeting, publicly.
I would be upfront and honest with you. I would be.
But why did you lie to us in executive session?
I didn't lie to you. I told you I was being sarcastic.
Letting it slip.
And what else did I say?
You said you let it slip.
We was not doing nothing that meets executive session things. That's what I told you.
That was talking about real estate, and it very well met the criteria. You signed affidavit saying it did too.
No, I signed affidavit. We go on the executive session all the time, sign affidavit, we know what we're going to talk about, but it won't happen again.
It's just a complete violation of trust, and it's, not only does it impact this real estate issue, but our economic development efforts. We're out here working hard to bring industry in here, and people are questioning, how can you protect my confidentiality when you've got a board member who stated that not only did they do it on purpose, but they would do it again? That is a huge concern to every citizen in this county.
That's a little bit different than what I'm doing.
It's the same principle.
But I'm not going to say and keep explaining myself. I done told you a dozen times what's to leave it on to be done with.
Two separate stories.
I can live with something like you can.
Well, I think the truth needs to be out there.
Well, I just told you the truth.
And that's why the issue about confidentiality, and I don't know about how the other board members feel, but I felt like I was lied to. I just state that publicly. I don't know if Commissioner Teasley and Sayer want to say anything or not, but that's the way I feel.
But respect, I believe this issue tonight is approved.
It is, and that's for sure. I have a motion, a second, to the executive session minutes. Any more discussion? Public comment on the executive session minutes? Not, all in favor, raise your right hand. You're not going to vote on that one either?
No. I don't remember it being that way. I'm sorry, but I just don't remember that.
What's the reason for abstaining?
I didn't say I was going to abstain. I said I was going to go vote.
So all against?
I'm a vote.
Are you going to vote? So that's enough? You're going to raise your hand?
Yeah. You didn't call for a change?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Motion carried 3-1. Commissioner Carter opposed. Next item on the agenda is a front setback variance request for Edmondson, the map and parcel number C77A009-016. This was tabled from our September the 8th meeting. Can I get a motion that we take this off the table?
I make that motion that we take it off.
Have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, is it second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I wouldn't.
Motion carried unanimously.
I'm abstaining from that.
Motion carried 3-0. Commissioner Carter abstains.
Chairman, I don't see anyone here that was represented, that was here representing this request at the last meeting. I'd be glad to go over the data, but that's up to y'all, where you want to...
The issue was about the floodplain and...
Correct. The issue was about the floodplain. I got the GIS, personally run that on GIS system. And basically, this little section right here, the whole floodplain that touches that property.
So there's no...
About 225 square foot.
So there's no need for...
Out of a half acre.
And we've had that situation before?
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of lots that's got the floodplain that actually touches a lot, but I don't think it would interfere with a home being built on.
Okay. Well, since there's nobody here, I don't guess there's any need to take any action tonight.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Next item on the agenda is item 12F, letter support for Franklin County, caution with the audit for the airport authority finances. We've discussed this with Franklin County Commissioners. Tried to have a meeting last week, couldn't get everybody together. They're going to move forward with a pretty extensive audit, the finances of the Hart Franklin Airport Authority. They've asked us, since we're a partner, if we'd share. And I told them, based on the conversations we'd had, I didn't think anybody had a problem with that. So they get a motion that we approve that letter of support for it, as well as participating in the cost.
I make a motion we approve the letter of support and the participation in part of the cost.
Have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, is it second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. What type of audit it going to be?
It's going to be a financial audit. It's going to go back and look at, possibly all the way back to the beginning. There's some things that have been stated in the Franklin County paper that weren't exactly right. They talked about the fact that they hadn't had an audit since 2014, I believe. And if you guys recall, I think we all remember this, there was an audit that was done actually last year for 2018, 2019. So, I mean, there have been audits that were done. There's questions that are out there that need to be resolved. And as a partner, I feel like it's our part to participate with them, as we've all said that we're okay with, so.
Well, my concern, if you do a regular audit, I don't know if you're going to catch some of the problems that we heard rumors that you have.
Allen Powell is getting stake to do this. So there's going to be some cost. It's going to be a forensic type audit.
That's the question I was going...
Right. They're supposed to, my understanding is supposed to back up for, again, like Salmo, back to the beginning, if not to the beginning of the airport authority and audit everything that they're following.
That's what I was looking for, if it was going to be a forensic audit, so.
I can't tell you it's going to be a complete forensic audit, but I can tell you it's going to be an extensive audit. I don't know that all the records are there, that's why I'm saying that. So I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion on letter of support for airport authority, public comment? Not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Moving on into item 13, new business, 13A CARES Act funding. Chair's got some money that he got from the feds.
Basically, under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economics Securities Act, that passed in Congress in March and signed by the President, March 27th, each state was issued X number of dollars based on population. And it was turned over to the, any city or county that had over a half a million population got their money direct from the feds. The rest of us, it came through the governor of the state. And the governor decided to use 30% of it to give out to the counties based on the criteria, the federal criteria. There was several items that could be reimbursed, but the biggest one was public safety. And we done the filing with the sheriff's office expenses and EMS expenses. On the sheriff's office, we got back, got a reimbursement of $323,335.96. EMS and the reimbursement was $754,450.15 for a total of $1,077,786.11. That's phase one. My understanding is supposed to be a phase two and possibly a phase three. That's still up to the governor. We haven't heard for sure, but I've seen some emails today that may lead me to believe that there's another phase coming. All this has got to be closed out by December of this year. So there may be more. Hopefully, there will be. But if they are, I'll keep everybody posted on as it comes down the line. But right now, we've got those amounts of dollars for EMS and law enforcement that we've collected on so far, and that money is in the bank.
What is this money going to be used? Or just going to reimburse it?
Reimbursement. It's reimbursing on money we've already spent, in other words.
Just want to make sure I had that clear, my man.
Right, right. Now, again, I'm not, I hadn't sat down and had to find details on what we can and can't do with it, but logically, you take it and reimburse the services for what you, for what you got reimbursed for, you use it for those purposes. And that's just for information only, no action needed.
No action taken. Okay, moving on to item 13B, credit for years of experience service EMS. This is in line with what we've done. This is due to promotion, and the request is to give the employee a 50% or 18 years credit to EMS director's position to partially compensate for the promotion and change in his position. So which one did you rather go with, Terrell?
Sir?
Which one did you rather go with? The 50%?
It's the same difference. It's 50%. It's 35 and a half years that you've been here, so if you figure 50, the 50% of that is about 18 years.
But 50% wouldn't round up to 18 if it's 35. It'd be 17.
17. I'd rather go with 18.
So 18 would be the best.
It makes it easier for me to count on the scale at a straight 18. That's the way it moves up and down. Even years.
All right, can I get a motion that we...
Can you explain to the public why we have to do this?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Basically, what it is in the EMS and law enforcement, too, the standard shift people, their shift has got scheduled overtime in it. In other words, EMS, for I can speak to that a lot better than I can law enforcement, because I could, everybody got a little different rotation. EMS, one paid period, they work 120 hours in that paid period. Next paid period is 120 hours. Third paid period is 116 hours. So their take-home pay is based on that overtime being figured in. Now, to take, to leave that shift at an hourly rate with the overtime, to kind of get up close, which still be less than what he takes home now, we need to make his adjustment in his salary. He'll be hourly anymore, he'll be salaried position. We just, I took the number and took his overtime off of what he's making back there now and tried to balance it out where he'd make the same amount of money that he's making now with no overtime on it. That's how this is calculated. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I knew what it was, but I didn't know what not.
Yeah. Well, for instance, when I come on 20 years ago, I took a $20,000 cut in pay to take the director's job over, I'm making on shift. And I just don't think that's really fair to do that. Gary Cobb helped me out after he hired me after a period of time. He got me some more money for me, gentlemen, and I appreciate it. But it's just not right. You can't get good quality people, take his leadership jobs if you're going to cut their pay in half.
We do the same thing for...
We do it everybody.
Other positions, that when you go out and hire somebody with experience, we give them credit for that, for those years of experience in two-year increments. So this is, this is part of our policy.
Yeah, it's just a fallen same policy we always follow.
I make a motion we go with 18 years' credit to EMS director.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, a second by Commissioner Carter, with 18 years. Make it retroactive to the promotion date.
Yeah, and I'll take effect October 1st.
October 1st. All right, I have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? Public comment on this issue? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a body camera purchase for the sheriff's office. The cameras that they currently have, we're having issues with them, being discontinued and getting replacement supplies. And the request is to purchase new body cams. You've got the packet, any packet, it's $31,634. That includes a portal license for $399 per year. That will be the recurring cost.
Correct.
Can I get a motion that we approve this request for sheriff's office?
So moved.
And that money's coming out of the CARES Act.
Correct. We can use that money to do this kind of stuff.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Carter. Second by Commissioner Teasley. As Commissioner Sayre mentioned, this may will come from the CARES Act. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.
And just for the record, company is Digital Ally would be the name of the company that is about.
They not going to do the same thing couple of years...
Rick, yeah, they probably will. I'll be honest with you. All of them do. About five, six years, they'll quit making them and you can't get replacement parts. I mean, it's the same way with a computer. They going rope you into buying something new all the time, unfortunately.
Next item on the agenda is county policy manual updates for 2020.
Yeah, she'll look for one. I want to go through this policy book all the time. We find little nicks and necks that need to be a little bit changed too. And she's got them listed here. It's just some minor changes. We found a loophole where if an employee quit at the first of the fiscal year and we hired them back before the end of the fiscal year and their vacation time come in in that 90 days, they would be able to pull twice the vacation in one year. That's just not right for the other employees. So this is a loophole that created that, that we found and we're closing, basically. And that covers about all the sections, vacation leaving and new hired employees and rehired We couldn't say no because we didn't have a policy to say no to, but it's still right and wrong, right and wrong. So we needed to fix that where we can treat everybody the same.
All right, can I get a motion that we adopt the recommended personnel policy and procedure changes for the handbook?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley. Is there a second?
I'll give you a second.
Second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Item 13E, we took off the agenda. Item 14 is public comment. If you'd like to address the board, if you'll raise your hand, be recognized. Anybody for public comment? In the back, please, James.
I thought it was actually on the agenda on the Hydra. So I didn't know if I could speak here. We talked a little bit...
We may have. It gives me a point of mind.
No, maybe. Okay, I'm the newly appointed director of Hydra and I just wanted to see your faces and names.
You didn't state your name.
Oh, I'm Mindy Wise. And I came on a couple of months ago, so I've been trying to put faces and names together and try to make connections with everybody throughout the county and the city. And so I really just wanted to come to you guys to tell you that we have some programs running, an after-school program for you. And for those of you that don't know what Hydra is, it's a local nonprofit youth organization that was created years and years ago, in the 80s, actually. And the county has provided us with a space to be in. We're located in the back of the old recreation area on Clay Street. And that was another thing, I just wanted to say thank you for providing the space for us to be there. The kids really enjoyed the space and were able to keep up with it and have less things to pay for with being there. So we have an after-school program running and we have what we've called Fourth Fridays going once a month, just a movie night and game night for families to come to. So if you guys know anybody that wants to be involved in that and want to come to it, it's free for the public to come to. So anybody with kids or grandkids, which I know most of you, all of them have. I have my own kids that go to Hart County School System, so you know, they're a part of it and I know that they really love to be involved. Our goal is to empower the youth, to give them things to do, but then also, you know, build them up from inside out versus just letting them go find other things to do that may or may not be...
Where's the movie night at?
It's actually at the Hydra building. We're looking at trying to maybe do it in a movie on lawn at a different location now that it's cooler outside, but when we started it was scorching hot out. But our next one is this Friday night at the Hydra building. And we have a movie popcorn free movie, you know, just bring your chairs and set up and hang out for free, so.
Do you show any westerns?
We don't. We might look into it. We are voting on a couple of different movies right now. It is not a western, it's not a...
Just like with westerns.
We can dig some about that.
Well, you can get rebounds.
But did you guys have any questions for me?
I don't.
Okay.
I appreciate you coming through.
Of course. No, it is okay. I'm going to leave these with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chairman and board members, come tonight, James Fulgham, Post 109, American Legion. You remember about a year or so ago, we had a discussion about moving the flagpole over to the other side of the courthouse and y'all said you would. Is that still going to happen?
As long as I would say we would.
Do you have any idea what day?
As long as it's structurally sound to do it.
Moving the flagpoles around is a big deal. Getting the lights too. Trying to have it, we've got wires on it. Move the flagpoles, see if we can do it. The way you power that light up.
Right.
That's been, and I'll be honest with you, it's been a while since we've had that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was still going to happen. And I appreciate that, guys. I sure do appreciate that. And also, I want to get that monument, World War Monument, off of the street and put it up on the courthouse grounds, okay, before somebody runs into it. It could be a lawsuit, okay? And also, next year, we're going to do this this year, American Legion Post 109, a more renamed Highway 29, Veterans Memorial Highway. It's in the works. Allen Powell's going to get it passed through legislation. And when that happens, I'd like to invite all y'all out there to have a ceremony and get that very well respectfully renamed Veterans Memorial Highway. Thank you very much.
I got something I want to say. There's a lot of good solar lights out there now, but you may not have to run the wires.
Oh, okay.
We tried them out here, we didn't have a lot of luck with them.
Well, I think if you find, if you find the right company, they'll last a good little while.
Well, I know the flagpole out there now is lit up and everything. That's nice. I really do appreciate it.
Getting the wire, wiring, put there in the courthouse and something like that. That makes that easy, get it across, all the other stuff. Get that come from the end by there with the crystal tree lights, boxes ready, get that come from there. You got irrigation system, you got other power lines on the back of it. Lost it on the ground, we use it...
We just wanted to update, the guys was asking me about, so I thought I'd bring a few attention tonight. I sure do appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Anybody else for public comment?
Gentlemen, according to my research, three councilman owned businesses in Hart County. Is that correct?
I do.
My question is, how many of y'all do business with the county? That's my question.
Very little. That's a very little.
Okay.
Well, let's talk about it since you're up here. Let's talk about it. You wanted to ask that question. I know it's there up here. Let's talk about it.
I got my hands on it.
Yeah, my company has done very little with the county. And if you look at the stuff that's been done, I'm a state contract Goodyear tire person, tire business, and you've got some invoices. And I want to share with you that I sell those tires at a loss, just so you know that. I don't make money off the county.
I'm not trying to. I'm just asking a question.
I know where you're going, Mr. Carter, so.
Okay.
But yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Things I'd like to comment on tonight, I have a couple of more FOIA requests I'd like to submit to the board. One, recently, the chair, when we were talking about the speed bumps in Bowersville, said that Bethany Bowersville Road and East Main Street was an emergency services corridor. So this right here is asking for the records. An disagreement was made with the town of Bowersville and it's official. So as soon as you can get that to me, according to law, that will be good.
I'll answer this one for you now.
I'm not asking for an answer, I'm asking for a point.
Well, I'm going to answer this one for you. I can't say that it's designated as an emergency services corridor, but when you're coming from the south end of the county, those ambulances go down East Main Street.
Well, the problem is, Joe, you just accused Commissioner Carter of lying, then you lied to this whole county.
I'm not.
You said it was a designated an emergency services corridor.
Those fire trucks and those ambulances come that way.
Was it designated an emergency services corridor as you said?
That's the quickest route.
That's not what I'm asking.
That's the quickest route.
You said in public.
I did not say it was a designated.
Yes, you did.
I said it was an emergency services corridor.
No.
We got some video. I'll be happy to watch it.
That's fine, however you want to put it. Get the information. Your wire's involved.
That's fine.
This is about the public comments. In the five minutes. I'll just rig the heading on this. This is a public record request for a duplicate copy of all correspondence and meeting minutes from the Hart County Board of Commissioners meetings from January 1st through 2017 through September 8th, 2020, that detail everyone who spoke during the public comments part of the meeting, what they talked about, were they told by the chair that they were limited to five minutes of comments? If so, who kept the time and what device was used to keep the time? Was any of the speakers allowed to go over five minutes? If so, why? So that's what I've got with that. And I want to make a suggestion under public comments and interest of fairness and make sure people aren't playing games with the time. Maybe Mr. Carter could put a clock up there on the monitor and we could watch it and talk for five minutes. I think that's fair. Okay. My next thing is the drug test. I brought it up several meetings ago and all I do is see it kicked down the road, the commissioners, our employees of Hart County. Hart County employees are required to take a random drug test. So I don't know what's going on with kicking it down the road. I'm not going to pretend to intimidate, maybe something's not right, but I know if I was sitting up there, I'd be ringing the bell, let's do this tonight. The last thing is, the other day, as I was going to La Bonia, put up into my road at East Main Street and 51, Chairman Dorsey was out there, they were doing some utility work. He had his vest on and I waved at him, rolled down the window and I said, Chairman Dorsey, I said, Joe, please be careful out here. I would hate to see you get run over by a car. Would you like to tell them what you told me, Joe?
I don't remember telling you anything.
Yeah, you did. You called me an asshole.
I ignored you.
You called me an asshole.
I ignored you.
Again, let's go back to the line. I think I've made my point.
You're out of order.
Always. You don't want to hear it.
That's right. That's why the conduct of the personal attacks, that's why public comment is so vital. And we have one individual who constantly, and there's video that we can show tonight of how you've acted in Bowersville, where you've gotten people's faces and pointed. That's a real civic citizen to do something like that.
I can't help it, they left a name under the gray stripe on them.
Anyway, anybody else for public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Turner?
My name's Chuck Turner.